The Hammond Common Council order for Monday, November fourteenth. Rise for the flag.
Eternal God, our Father, Lord God, we come again saying thank you, Lord God. Thank you for this day that you've made, Lord. Lord God, as we go about your business, Lord God, continue to guide us, keep us. And, Lord God, I'm just asking that you continue to cover our police and fire, our students and our teachers, Lord God, in our city and our residents, in Jesus' name, amen.
Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Present.
Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kowinski. Torres. Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Rakels.
Here.
Orpil.
Here, let the record show, eight present, one absent, seven in chambers, one by Zoom. Mayor?
Hi, good to see everybody. Obviously, I've been a little busy lately, so this will probably be a shorter address than you guys are used to. I want to thank everybody for the hard work putting forth on the city budget. Megan and her staff worked real hard to put everything together, despite the fact that she was getting married and had a lot of things going on. I want to say thank you to City Controller Megan and the staff at the Controller's office, as well as the City Council for working real hard on the budget. I appreciate all your hard work sincerely, so thank you. I want to say thank you to Eileen, Special Events Coordinator, for another Veterans Day Parade. Great Veterans Day Parade, we did get it in despite the weather. I want to remind everybody that tree lighting ceremony is on next Friday, it's on the 25th of November. We're gonna have a real rain there. Don't want to miss that, five o'clock PM. Both lanes are open in downtown Hesville on Kennedy. We're meeting on confirming the truck route issues as we speak. I know there's been a lot of questions about that. We got a lot of comments back from Mayor's Night Out to help us focus on these issues, so I want to thank the public for attending Mayor's Night Out, even though it was not an easy one. I think we got a lot of good feedback, and we use that feedback to help make things better. I know there is some confusion, and I want to thank City Engineer for jumping in on that issue. We had a potential no lane situation on Kennedy Avenue, which was unacceptable, and I want to thank Dean Button for jumping on that in a timely manner. I want to commit to Councilman Mark Kowinski before this term is over, fourteen months. I'm gonna make sure that Plasky Park Pool is financed and not completed. It's gonna take a while, as you know. But right now, Councilman Mark has offered to put a million dollars of his gaming money up towards the pool construction, which I appreciate very much. We still have about $2 million left over from the bond proceed, and we still have a gap after that, I know you're aware of that, but I want to say it on the record that that's something I intend to do in the next fourteen months. So, that's something, that's the last park project that was not completed for a number of reasons, and I'm gonna, in front of the council, in front of Councilman Mark, guarantee that it's gonna be done before this term is up. So, it'll be financed before this term is up. That's one thing that's still hanging out there, and I don't like things hanging out there. So, that's all I got. Any questions?
Any questions for me?
Thanks, everybody, good to see you.
Item number four, approval of minutes.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
Most accepted minutes from October twenty-four, 2022, be placed on file, please.
Second. Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres. Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Orpil.
Yes, let the record show, eight in favor, one absent. Item number five, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
Make motion to approve claims dated ten twenty-six, twenty-two, and ending with claims dated eleven nine twenty-two. Claim number sixty-three forty-nine through claim number six-seven five-seven, the amount of thirteen million, four hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres. Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Orpil.
Yes, let the record show, eight in favor, one absent. Item number six, public hearings, there are none. Item number seven, communications. Does anybody have any communications? Does anybody have any communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
Yeah, I just wanted to share that this weekend, Saturday, November nineteenth, from eight AM to ten AM, we'll be hosting a turkey giveaway. Just want to thank Councilwoman Alexander and Councilman Rakos or Golick for their support in hosting this event. The F A S Dean Center is also supporting and sponsoring, as well as the Food Bank of North Precinct Indiana and the Ministry Alliance of Hammond and in Greater Vicinity. So, one thing, everybody coming together, we're giving away two hundred and fifty turkeys for families for Thanksgiving, and also supporting the Eric Carris Center, who's having their community dinner that same night, and Hammond Central's having their community dinner later on this week. So, just want to provide that information for any families who are looking for support during the holidays.
Thank you. Councilman Emerson.
Mr. President, and Barry, and Katrina, I am also donating to that. I had trouble hearing you on Zoom, so I'm also donating to the turkey giveaway.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the communications? Does anybody else have anything on the communications? Communications are now closed. Item number eight, committee reports. Councilman Kowinski.
Council as a whole will be bringing out twenty-two dash forty-eight.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
And council as a whole will be bringing out twenty-two forty-seven. Mr. President.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, the Capital Improvement Board met on November seventh. We approved one hundred fifteen thousand, five hundred nineteen dollars and fifty cents for supplemental resurfacing work to the resurfacing program. We also approved three hundred sixty-four thousand, three hundred dollars for a new traffic signal at the Sportsplex at sixty-six hundred Indianapolis Boulevard. The next meeting will be Monday, November twenty-first, with a work-study session at four-thirty PM and a meeting at five PM. Moving on to the Community and Crime Watch meetings. Coming up on November fifteenth, the, excuse me, East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch will meet on November fifteenth, six PM, at the Ophelia Steen Center. Edison Community Watch will meet Wednesday, December seventh, and that will be at Edison School, beginning at six-thirty PM. The Harrison Park Crime Watch will meet Tuesday, November sixth, at the VFW on Holman Avenue, that begins at six PM. Hesville Crime Watch will meet Thursday, November seventeenth, six PM at the Gene Shepherd Center. Irving Community Watch will meet Friday, December second, at Irving School, beginning at nine fifteen AM. And Whiting Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, December fourteenth, beginning at six-thirty PM at Calumet College. And as always, I recommend that everyone try to attend a community or crime watch meeting to find out what's going on in your neighborhood, so you know precautions to take to protect your property and your family. And never be afraid to call 911 if ever you feel that something just is not right, because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the committee reports? Does anybody else have anything on the committee reports? Does anybody else have anything on the committee reports? Committee reports are now closed. Item number eight, ordinances, third reading and final passage.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash forty-seven, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines, and ordinance creating new funds, fund number two-two-five-six and fund number two-two-five-seven for the City of Hammond opioid settlement funds.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of twenty-two forty-seven.
Second. Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Rakos. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
As everyone knows, the, there was a twenty-six million dollar settlement made nationwide for the opiate, opioid crisis. Of the twenty-six million dollars of the national settlement, five hundred and seven million dollars will be coming to the City of Hammond, and it will be a, I'm sorry, that is incorrect. The City of Hammond will receive approximately two point four million dollars, and it will be distributed over a period of several years. Our controller has requested two new line items for these funds to be distributed from.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres. Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Orpil.
Yes, let the record show, eight in favor, zero opposed, with one absent.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash forty-eight, sponsored by Councilman Spitali and Kowinski, and ordinance reclassifying certain lands in the City of Hammond for zoning purposes and amending ordinance number eighty-five fourteen and ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the City of Hammond, including the regulations and maps to administer the zoning plan in order to provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with a comprehensive land use plan, as amended, for property commonly known as ten fifty-one Indianapolis Boulevard, Hammond, Indiana.
Councilman Kowinski.
I move for third reading and final passage of twenty-two dash forty-eight.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Kowinski, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kowinski.
This ordinance has to do with rezoning the property known as the Hookah Station on that ten to fifteen Indianapolis Boulevard house from the Overpass Casino. Going from an I-two manufacturing district to rezoning to a commercial district, which is the appropriate zoning for this kind of development. The gas station, the gas station and the building will be torn down, as well as the pumps. The pumps will be reduced from twelve to eight pumps, and the building site will be reconfigured to make room for a QSR building, which is a quick service restaurant with a drive-through, so that would be in addition to the property when the rebuilding and the new buildings go up. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski. Torres. Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Orpil.
Yes, let the record show, eight in favor, zero opposed, with one absent.
President Orpil, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Item number eleven, resolutions.
Resolution A, twenty-two R dash eighteen, sponsored by Councilman Torres, a resolution of the Hammond Common Council approving the First Amendment to Development Agreement among the City of Hammond, Indiana, the City of Hammond Redevelopment Commission, and the Northwest Indiana Holman LLC regarding the Bank Calumet Project.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I move for final passage of twenty-two R eighteen.
Second.
Motion's been made for final passage and adoption by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilwoman, uh, Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, being that Councilman Torres is not here this evening, he asked me to introduce the ordinance, and this is the information, I mean, the resolution. This is the information that I have on the ordinance. It is a resolution approving the First Amendment to the Development Agreement between Hammond Redevelopment Commission and N W I Holman LLC developer. Initially, there was a twenty-four million dollar investment amount, as we discussed in caucus, due to inflation, that is now approximately twenty-eight million dollars. The developer is requesting an additional seven hundred fifty thousand dollars due to inflation and supply chain issues. This amendment was approved by redevelopment last week. The rehab started in September and is moving forward quickly. Around one hundred market rate residential units in this nine-story building. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kowinski.
During the committee meeting, General Counsel Kevin Smith also let us know that the Indiana Economic Development Corporation also upped their funding from, I believe, five million to eight point five million, and the city was prudent and waiting for this response from the Indiana Development, Economic Development Commission before we upped our amounts, so they did, and so did we. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski. Torres. Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Orpil.
Yes, let the record show, eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
President Orpil, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Item number twelve, new and unfinished business, intent to consider goes away with the passage of twenty-two forty-eight. Is there anything else on the new and unfinished business? Is there anything else on the new and unfinished business? Councilman Emerson.
Just like to thank everybody that showed up to the Veterans Day Parade on November fifth, and as well as the dedication of the Veterans Memorial at Douglas and Lyman on eleven eleven at eleven AM. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, and I wanted to especially thank Ernie Dillon for all his hard work at the dedication on Friday. A lot, I know a lot of hard work went into that project, and the only thing that happened was it was windy and cold. But other than that, it was absolutely beautiful, so thank you to Ernie Dillon.
Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Hearing none, new and unfinished business is closed. Public expression, Ken?
Greetings, Mr. President, council members, councilwomen and men. I'm here to discuss the dune woodlands in Hesville again. I just wanted everybody to know that Hesville is a little unique in the City of Hammond in that we've always had a lot of woods there when we grew up. It's kind of the soul of Hesville, if not Hammond entirely. Our natural areas. It's why we're different from the rest of Hammond. We don't have lakes, big, huge lakes and things of that sort, but what we did have were plenty of woods. Woods that we roamed around in, we had dunes, wetlands, swamps, and tons of trees, animals, and we would wander these woods as we were kids. You know, we would just go out there and learn all kinds of stuff. Some people say Hesville was a place where you could be hillbilly, live in the middle of the city, and still feel at home. A real learning environment. I pity the kid that has to go through life without having a place like this to roam, but that's kind of where we're headed right now. Morton's graduates and alumni really benefited from these woods when we grew up. A lot of us, a lot of us are botanists, biologists, landscape architects, writers, and a lot of them are very influenced by growing up in these woods. Many of them, like I said, have become writers. What I distributed to the Common Council today were three stories from people from Hesville. One of them is from a guy named Michael Goodson. I don't know if people are familiar with him. He used to write a lot of stories, and he would end up being on like, "If you grew up in Hammond, you remember when," dot, dot, dot. And he put all kinds of stories about different things. And he was, he grew up originally in Hesville. I was in a cafe in Highland a few weeks ago, and then I looked over to my left, and there I saw a story, it said "Hesville Dunes" on it. I was like, oh my goodness, what's that? So, I started reading it, and as soon as I finished reading it, the cafe owner came up to me and said, "Yeah, good story, huh?" Yeah, I said, "Well, he," she says, "Well, he just passed away last week." And I had briefly communicated with this man a few times, and he was just a real incredible soul. He actually donated to our little campaign here. Little did I know, until retrospect. So, what I wanted to do is hand his story out, so you guys could read it. It takes place in the fifties, when he was a kid. And the other story is about another Hesvilleite, and it goes on through the sixties and seventies. And then the last story is from another Hesvilleite, which would be Gene Shepherd. And I kind of like to look at these stories as the Christmas past, Christmas present, and Christmas is yet to come, if we don't change our ways. Okay? Michael Goodson wrote stories about Shipman's Fuel Oil, or Morton, Morton High and Mr. Hayes, the unexpected, Hesville's Five and Dime, Hesville Living, Hesville Dunes. This particular story he talks about right here is about the intersection of one hundred sixty-ninth and Grand. I specifically remember that area because it was some of the earliest memories of my childhood, is when they bulldozed all the dunes over there. There used to be the largest dunes in all of Hammond at that given time, and I remember, you know, the older kids and people talking about Hill Ninety-Nine and all of these other places. Well, they completely flattened the entire area, and there's no trace of it whatsoever. It was completely demolished, and it's probably one of the ugliest pieces of real estate in Hesville. It's just one giant asphalt parking lot with some stores in it now. They could have at least saved some of it, but that's not usually how this works out. The second story is about, you know, where people learned to ice skate, where people went sledding and things of that sort. When the swamps would fill up in the spring, they would go, us kids would go out and wander the, and hop on rafts and act like Tom Sawyer, things like that. The last one is Gene Shepherd. He's got the deepest, darkest dark of Midwestern humor, this guy, but I think he's funny. He described Hammond as destined to become one of the ugliest pieces of real estate this side of the Craters of the Moon. Indeed, it bore some resemblance to the Craters of the Moon. Our founding fathers set the pattern of futility for all future generations. You have to understand what he was talking about at the given time, okay? He was talking about the utter destruction of the land that was going on at the time, when he was around in the thirties and forties. And they, and he talks about the voluminous oil refineries and things of that sort, or the steel mills, and the way they just raped the land and didn't have, make any sense or try to keep any characteristic of what was there beforehand. Last weekend, we had a cleanup at one hundred seventy-first and Grand, and we set up, and people came out, and we cleaned up the entire woods over there. People were complaining that they were a little dirty in there, and we didn't take care of it earlier. These woods, we did not know was city property. We got a lot of it done, we still have a lot to do, and it's the last little section that we need to get done. I find it surprising that some of the city officials complain about this area, and they have the power to do something, yet don't. They would rather demonize the area, as for a reason to develop it. And that's exactly what's going on, because, let's face it, this, the city has not been a good community member to these people in that neighborhood. They, it was just trash-ridden, there are vines growing out in the street. The same thing is going on on Parrish Avenue right now. It's almost as if they don't want it to look good. Almost as if they want it to look like a scourge, so it will be easier to demolish. And I hope that stops. The last bit was, I was meeting all these people, we got forty-seven signatures while we were out there. It was like lazy canvassing. And one woman came out there, and she, we were talking about owls and birds and hawks, and she said that she had a picture of an owl, and she sent it to us last night. And then, it was a, I looked it up, it's a barred owl. She's got a picture of it, it's a beautiful giant owl, it's absolutely gorgeous. You can see it on Hesville Dusters, President, it's beautiful. Anyway, at about four o'clock in the morning, I had to get up and go to the bathroom, which I'm getting older, and I gotta do it more often. I went back to bed, and I heard an owl hooting outside my window. I have never heard one in my entire life. Okay? I looked it up that night before, and there we had it. It was just a sign of serendipity. Please help us save these woods, thank you.
Thank you. George? I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Second.
Second.
Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres. Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Orpel.
Yes. Thank you.